...of Riverside Drive for ability weavers to host a weaving and fiber arts market on Saturday, September 26, 2020. I've been informed they will follow all state requirements for outdoor events. They are requesting the closure of Riverside Drive from near Main to Elm from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We will require proper insurance documentation, special events permits. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the request for the road closure of Riverside Drive on September 26, 2020 from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. as presented. Unfortunately, Eric couldn't make it tonight. Give me your questions.
It's the same thing that Tanya did, right?
Basically.
Yeah. It's, he just took what she was doing and they're gonna do. It's gonna be totally different. Better group, but Tanya helped him with what he has to present.
There is no impact on your back parking lot or the post office parking lot or mikes?
No, this time around, Tanya made sure that the people that were with her parked away so that there was customer parking because that was some things that we had heard last time, but that wasn't an issue this time.
Okay. So they would leave it open up to the first driveway of that back lot or they closed it down?
No, from the dumpsters right there.
Oh, okay.
Both drives.
And then it went to the end of light power, so that area right there.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to make that motion to approve the road closure?
I made that motion.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Amity Street Engineering Services, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we all know, Amity Street is one of our four roads and that's where you found the people that get to some industrial facilities and the schools. You pass the state's try to get some funds from the state. Successful, but recently the city manager was successful in getting a community development block grant for a portion of the work and in the amount of $250,000. Earlier this year, the DDA supported the project by providing up to $142,000 towards the project. So out of what, at the time we thought it was a half million dollar project, we're down to about $107,000 per city to fund from our pots of money. So we are looking at getting started on the engineering work for this, for this project so that we can go out for bid in the wintertime and then be ready to go when school is over with it for this coming year. Williams Works, Dave Austin here. He looked at the project and put together an estimate to do the design work. To take it from today, put the design together, work with CBDG on giving it out for bid and reviewing the bids, getting this up to construction. And there is quoted as $36,500 for this work, which includes soil borings. We found with the three streets we taped over there earlier this year, one street had, we hit soil borings, which was a good thing. We found one street that had really good gravel, two others that did not. So we adjusted for that at the project and built the street the correct ways and Riverside does the same way. Soil borings, while they don't look pretty, they do a good, a good job of giving us information that we need when it comes to the design portion of the project.
Did I end with us doing the design?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Dan?
Did they go all the way from Main Street all the way up to?
School. It goes all the way to Suffolk.
Off.
What's the total cost of this project then?
We estimated this, when we first started this, at a half million dollars, $500,000.
City's portion is the 107%.
About 107, yes.
Eighty percent.
The city's.
Any idea what the engineering cost will be for the project itself? Because this is just up until it starts, correct?
Right.
You know, typically municipal project, it was at a total of about 15%. So similar cost to what you have now if you have full-time inspection. If we end up with soil boring showing that you don't need as aggressive a treatment on it than both the design and the construction.
Dan, is there any water sewer that needs to be done at that same time? Like look at the water.
Well, there's some water that, that facility that needs to be addressed, but we think we're addressing it in a different way up though when we do Lincoln. And then there's sewer manhole that has some questions, but I believe that sits out in M21 in that, in the project itself. So we already took care of the problem at the other end at Suffolk. We did that, that part of the project.
All right. Somebody want to make the motion to approve the design and engineering quote?
Go move.
Support. Any other discussion or questions for Dan? Suzie?
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Water billing late fees, Mike?
Since the COVID-19 pandemic began in March, the city has not issued late fees for not meeting water filling deadlines. When I presented this item on how you wanted to handle further, the council agreed to continue to waive fees in April, but asked that I bring the issue back in May. I was then told the city council would like to review this in August when they waived the fees in May. I've been informed we have a number of people utilizing a payment plan to address their bills. As of the July 20th, 2020 water billing deadline, we had 65 accounts past due. This is not a very high number for the city as a lot of times people wait two months and then pay so they can use their credit cards. As manager, this has not been a terrible issue for us. Under Governor Whitmer's Executive Order 2020-144, we are not allowed to conduct water shut offs until 11:59 p.m. on December 31st, 2020. There is also an option of reinstituting the fee. I can see arguments from both sides of the debate on this issue. I don't want to create a system to reward people to not follow their obligations. However, it really hasn't been an issue. That said, we will stand ready to follow any course of action you would like.
So what you're telling us is 65 in the past due column is fairly normal?
Yeah.
Or not? It's not like?
Yeah, it's not, there's been nothing that's really been out of the, out of the realm. For the most part, people were paying their bills. I think we would, I did ask the question as to what, how many would be shut off after this payment and it was relatively low.
I think that's an easy one. It's one of your lower bills. It's easier for people to keep up on them. They're trying not to get behind it. It's, I don't know. Nobody's taking advantage of it.
No, they really haven't.
I don't see a problem in continuing not to add to people's burden. We're not losing a ton of money and people aren't taking advantage of us. That's exactly what we want.
Until the execution by the governor.
Yeah.
So what you're saying?
Going to waive the fees till?
Till the very first.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if we see a spike in the, in the numbers of not paid, then okay, but if it's gonna maintain where we've been.
Do we have any idea what that's costing us in revenue for the late fees event on that number?
I'd have to, I'd have to research that if I could.
I don't think.
Dan?
I can't speak to the late fees, but I can speak to the shut off notice thing stopping on December 31st. Technically, we won't be able to turn people off with their water in the wintertime, but the case they heat with water, we're not allowed to shut people off if that's how they heat their homes. So that's something that could play into that deal.
Our revenue key, it's like five bucks of account, so two, three hundred bucks a month.
It's not, it's not, it's, I'd have to calculate it, but I looked at the thing. It didn't jump out at me. If that answers my question.
It does?
Yeah, I'm good. People didn't take advantage of it during the hard times when they were fucking getting on unemployment and stuff. I don't see any reason to start charging them now. Waive them until that executive order expires. Definitely a deal without them. Does that sound good to everybody? Consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, Michael, Pink Arrow Pride Resolution.
For the 13th straight year, the Lowell High School sports team initiated the cancer awareness and fundraising event called Pink Arrow Friday to be held on Thursday. Is it September 3rd or September 13th? Suzie?
It's the 3rd.
Okay, it is the 3rd. What did I, what was?
It's a Friday instead of Thursday.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's on a Thursday.
Okay. On Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. The players will, will wear pink jerseys in games being held that day. As of right now, no football, don't know about the other sports. Funds are being raised for Gildas Club of Lowell and Lowell Community Wellness for Pink Arrow family support. Recommended motion is that the Lowell City Council adopt Resolution 18-20 for claiming Thursday, September 3rd, 2020 as Pink Arrow Friday, Arrow Force 13 and City Lowell.
Are you guys gonna do a thing at Impact this year, Perry? Like you had last year?
So I can just, just speak on the Pink Arrow a little bit. So as everybody knows, that football has tentatively gone to the spring again, but Pink Arrow is, in these times, they're still, we're supposed to know at the end of this week whether soccer, volleyball, because they're part of the Big Barrel. We've traditionally played volleyball outside and soccer and then football game. So, and we recognize that certainly if it went on, whether there'd be fans be allowed or not, but the big thing is that cancer knows its own boundaries and Pink Arrow supports Gildas in cancer and grievance and then also had the, through the Lowell Community Wellness helps support families that are on that cancer journey. So we're continuing with the fundraising. We've, the team has done a great job of getting our shirt donors and different people involved. This Friday is going to be Community Day at, at Impact Church out in the parking lot. There will be a blood drive that's going on and also the, I believe the, the mammography bus is going to be there. So it certainly is much scaled down. I know the township in the evening, they've got, they've introduced eight sand volleyball courts and they're gonna have some exhibits. So we, we want people to come out. There's a huge shortage in the West Michigan area for blood, so everybody that can donate can get a hold of Versity, I believe it's called, used to be called Michigan Blood, but donate. And again, you know, with the COVID, we're hoping, we're, since it was just announced this last Thursday, I believe, that the football was going to the spring, so we've been brainstorming, so you know, what good is the Pink Arrow shirt? We're hoping local businesses will get involved and say like, again, like the car wash, wear your shirt today and get 50 cents off or a dollar off on your, on your car wash restaurants, you know, two for one or 20% off or whatever. We're hoping that the local businesses will, will step on board with some promotions that they, we're not, we're not gonna create the promotions, but we're hoping the local businesses help create promotions to help fund Pink Arrow so we can continue helping those that have a cancer journey.
Thanks, Perry. What are the hours on Friday, the Community Day?
I believe it's 10 to 7.
Yeah.
Don't, I'm not betting my life on it, but I think Teresa said 10 to 7.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution 1820 for claiming Thursday, September 3rd as Pink Arrow. I'll support. Any other questions for Perry? Suzie?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
We put that resolution in the next pack if we can read it.
Okay.
All right. Lowell Area Schools, easement. Steve?
Good evening. Last Thursday, the Lowell Light Power August 4th meeting, the Light Power Board moved to recommend to the city council to accept an easement from Lowell Area Schools. I'm sure most people here remember that the schools just had a mileage increase in the last year and a half, two years, and part of that mileage is going towards building, improvements and upgrades and remodels at the Bushnell and Middle School just east of us. Lowell Light Power plans to install underground infrastructure on their property and to do that, we need an easement. They've offered us this easement at the cost of $1. In addition, the infrastructure we install will use to expand further south for our voltage conversion system upgrade projects. Light Power Board's recommendation to the council to accept the easement included in your package for cost of $1 made by Light Power.
Do you have that in the motion?
We do, we do. We'll find it.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Motion to approve Light Power Board's recommendation?
So move, your mayor is.
I'll support it. Suzie?
Councilmember Cantio?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right. Board and Commission Report, Marty?
Well, we just went over what we did at Light Power meeting. We didn't have a planning commission because we couldn't do Zoom. I think, Mike, you're talking about doing planning here if, next month or if we have to, so.
Yeah, we're gonna do plant, we're gonna be planting here till the weather doesn't allow it.
That's it?
Good.
My report, Matt, at Stony Lakeside Park, the trails is the big topic there. We're still trying to get that pushed through. We have some easements and fundraising to get done in the next six weeks or so, October 1st. And pushing forward with that, still the trail route going down Grand River, south of the river. Dave Austin is working on that for us, doing a great job, moving forward.
Jim?
I had none.
But.
The big news from the chambers, stuff nobody wants to hear, they decided to not do Christmas through Lowell this year. The handle of the graphic.
So, good. All right. Fire Authority, Matt, we went over the proposal, not proposal, the recommendations from the graph. We didn't make any motions on any of them. Next meeting, we're gonna decide what we're gonna do about replacing Ron when he retires at the end of September. And then the discussion on the new county engine is pushed back indefinitely because the county will not approve any bids until we have a, they won't do it on a retiring or interim chief. We'll have a chief in place permanently before the county will come out. But that, we're still a year away, so that's not gonna push us too far back. Have to step up the design process a little bit, but the fire guys handle all that.
Mike, what day is Ron's retirement?
25th, I think?
Yeah.
On the 5th or something?
September 25th.
Friday.
25th.
25th, okay.
Yep, there's a couple of, we have one more fire authority meeting before that, so figure out what we're gonna do there. That's all I have. Questions on the monthly reports? Mike, manager report?
Sure. A couple of items. First off, I wanna put to bed a rumor that's out there. There was a rumor that the city of Lowell forced Lowell youth football to end the football season. That is an incorrect statement. In fact, I've had no contact with any, me or my staff have not had any contact with anyone regarding Lowell football until about 11:30 today when they told us we shut it down. And it was news to me. So in the meantime, I've got emails and phone calls and all that, and I've had to call the rumors. That being said, we did verify with the insurance company if there, if there were gonna be concerns from the insurance company if an exposure were to occur. And as long as Lowell, Lowell youth football follows basically the safe protocols that basically we're requiring everyone else and they list us as an additional sergeant, sure just like everyone else, it's not gonna be an issue. So that's really gonna be the decision of Lowell youth football as to what they want, what they want to do going forward and it's really not the city of Lowell's decision. So I just wanna put that, I just wanna put that rumor to bed before, before it continues to spread. I wanna share my passing to Bob Robinson. Bob was a 25-year employee for the city. He retired in 2015, I believe. He did work for us part-time last year and I got to work with him a lot when I was doing the interim role between the public works and the, and the city and got to know Bob really well and I liked working with him and he, he knew a lot about the city and he really did care. And it's really sad to see him pass, but I wanna give my thoughts and prayers and condolences to Bob's family. I don't have any information regarding services or anything of that nature, but what I do, I'll share them with you. I wanna congratulate Scott Van Solkema to his promotion to sergeant. I had the opportunity to sit through, help Chief Hirsch through that interview process and the selection process. Probably one of the most fun things I've done in the last couple of months. And, you know, both candidate, it was a really tough decision. It wasn't like one stood out and, and over another. Both candidates, they have very strong qualities and they have very strong qualities in different areas. And I think that's, that's a good thing for our police department and, but it was a very, it was a very, very tough decision and, but congratulations to Scott. I also wanna congratulate Steve on his new position. I kinda knew, I kinda knew you weren't gonna be here that long, so when I met you.
Lot of years.
Well, as general manager, I've been here four. I knew you weren't gonna be here that long. So I, I wanna wish you well in your new endeavor. I enjoyed working with you and we've been through a lot of interesting things together, so, so looking forward to that. Showboat, Moran has, has left the site. They've completed all of their welding. The, they will, they will begin painting next week. It's, I believe the company Seaway, they're responsible for painting the Mackinac Bridge. They're gonna be working over the, over a three-week period getting the painting complete. We're also looking into an issue on Monroe Street. We get complaints from time to time about semi trucks going up Monroe to Atwood. It's, we get, we see them, we get them. With one officer on patrol, we might be able to, to sight a small percentage of, of the, of the trucks we see. Chief Hirsch is gonna start putting his, on micro vehicle out, so if we see trucks, he can jump out and try and get them. But one of the things we're looking at, and I'm still trying to find out the legality of this and it would, it probably would require a grant somewhere as well, but I'm looking to see the legality of placing those cameras like you would see on a toll road that can get license plates. And when we get complaints about it that the police can't respond to, hopefully maybe we can pull toll cameras and see whether or not we can detect, detect the truck if it's in that area, we know it's been there and then hopefully be able to cite it. Now, I don't know the legality of that. That's what I'm asked, looking into the question of. In Michigan, I know for a fact you can't use cameras for speed enforcement and you can't use, you can't use cameras for, for red light enforcement. But I don't know, honestly, I don't know what the motor vehicle code says about this one. And so I've asked, I've asked Jessica to at least look into it for me and if once I get a better answer, I'll let you know. We also received our funds, our proceeds from the Stoll estate on Friday. We put, it was about $78,000 and some change, so we put $50,000 in for the showboat, $25,000 for the trail as directed and then the remaining for a bench. So Dan and I are working on that. And then also, lastly, I have, after talking to the council members, we have booked Creekside Park for the, all the council meetings in September and October, weather permitting. Obviously, if weather doesn't allow us to be here, we can, you know, set it up so we can easily go to Zoom, but I know, I, I know the council like this format and so we're gonna try and do this until the weather doesn't allow us to, and that's all I have.
I'll sit out here all winter.
Regarding Monroe, I remember kicking around, making it one-way that last block.
Yep.
That's probably pretty dang quick.
Yeah, relatively expensive.
Yeah. Can I say, what would that?
That's not what I thought you were gonna suggest, but I'm glad that's what you suggested.
Well, I was thinking about those things with the.
Strip straps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you driving a truck for living and then you see a Doona Anderson, you don't matter. Because.
Didn't you say the GPS is sending them down there?
Yeah. My, even my GPS in my semi, I came through town last week with it, I stopped at my store. So I came through and I turned it on and I told it I wanted to go to Atwood and it told me to turn on Monroe.
We talked about making it out of Monroe.
Yeah, and with the project in 2022, that might be, this may never even have to happen. We might be able to resolve the issue when we reconstruct Monroe in 2022 anyway, but I'm just trying to look at different options.
Wasn't that Joe shifting to Washington?
Jefferson was the.
I realized that, I know not Jefferson, but I mean, if they're taking the most, if GPS is showing them the most expedient route, isn't it just gonna move them one street over?
I don't know.
I'm gonna say probably 90% of the trucks have not more used to trucking. I, I can't leave, because we probably get, I live by Jefferson, what do you get, 30 a day?
Absolutely.
And so it's gotta be onesies, twosies that are coming down Monroe. It can't be, I mean, you live there.
There's enough, and I'm not home that often. I mean, they're there.
So my question, if you make it one-way, what's to stop the truck coming, if he's, you're talking about one-way going to Atwood?
Just the, no, no, just the last block from.
But what, but I understand that, but what's, what's to stop the truck coming the other way that is going in the right direction one-way?
If he's coming from Atwood and comes.
That's where we put the strips and pop his tires.
I would guess most of them, once they're at Atwood, take the better route down Jefferson.
Yeah.
We paved it all pretty and smooth for them.
Our system and our fleet upgrades every July 1st, so we get updated, you know, new areas, but not all systems do that. Some systems you buy and.
If we have to pay GPS, it doesn't send us to Jefferson.
If you have ways, ways is pretty neat. Ways doesn't let you go anywhere. You send it to Google and change it. If we're doing enforcement along with education, it's a minimal amount of trucks that aren't using Jefferson. You just tell them, you just take it to a friend.
What's the, what's the fine if they're doing that?
I don't know what the fine is, but right now we would write it as a disobeying a traffic control device, probably 150 bucks. And there's other things that we can do. There's a truck route violation, I don't know what the fine would be on that, but that'd be a little more hefty. We figured if we, the more people we stop, just tell them, hey, look, all your friends come down, it's gonna happen to them. So eventually they're working around that they'll shift over to Jefferson.
So there's a scoring system on your CSA scores and that's a, that's like a five or a six on the scoring for disobeying a truck route. You can only have up to, have to hit with the numbers, but it isn't that many and they suspend your license.
So they don't wanna collect a couple of them?
Yeah. And most people learn real, real quick.
I would imagine the insurance looks at that number too.
Yeah, because your, your company insurance goes.
Yeah, that's where you start hitting. That'll get their attention real quick. All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
Don't remind me, just why you didn't say when I thought. Roundabout. Marty, council comment. Uh, oh, sorry. Suzie and I are gonna work together on appointments. We're gonna pull old applications, see if these people are still interested and then get an updated list. We've had a couple of resignations and a couple of people that did decide they wanted to continue, so.
Is the camera on? I would like to encourage all the keyboard warriors out there that know how to solve all the problems that we have. We got positions open on boards. Step up to the plate and get involved. How's that?
Marty, council comment?
My name's Mike DeVor.
I don't, I don't have much.
Okay.
I'm good.
Great. Can't beat the.
I'd like to congratulate Steve on his new position. He's a rock star and we were lucky to have him for 11 years. He did a lot of great things here. I know we got you for a month or two, yep. Good luck. I'm glad to hear you're staying in the area. Says a lot about how great Lowell is when somebody travels a little bit to call Lowell their home.
Still gonna be working for us, just in a different capacity.
Yeah.
Yep.
Father of the food chain.
Yeah.
Can you ring the books a little bit so we get a better deal on our.
Probably get the best power supply deals we can get.
For the whole state.
Right, yeah.
Jim? I'm good. What?
Also, gonna miss you. Um, I'd like to say two positive things in spite of all the crap that's been going on. Um, you look above Superior Furniture and they are kicking butt and building 12 apartments. They're already getting people calling them and they've just got the roof done and some roughing going. And across the street from me, there's been a big jump in the last week on the Riverview Flats.
All right. I got nothing, Jim.
I'll make a motion adjourned at 8:19.
Or? Motion in a second. Anybody who does, I want to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Adjourn.